All right, so this is the State and Planning Commission meeting for the month of July here on the 31st. We are here to review three hearings tonight. We have three hearings and issues to address, and I understand there are a couple here, people here from the public that would like to make a couple of statements. Normally, those don't come to us in statements. They normally get to go through the planning officer through the city, but we'll entertain those at the very first, and if you can keep them brief, so that we can then get to the hearings and get work through what we need to work through tonight. All right? All right, so first, right here, please state your name and your address, and you can make your statement to the planning commission. You need to come up to the table, please. Make sure your mic light is on, the green one.
Now it's on.
Okay.
My name is Mary Kathleen Myers. Most people know me as Kitty, which is what you've heard from Jim. I'm here because I spoke with Dan Fleishman several times over the last couple of years about a property that I was buying on North Evergreen Avenue and 230 North Evergreen and last time I spoke with him, actually, was right before he retired, and I had purchased the building to build there, and he read the new code requirements, which were very prescriptive. Basically, it didn't say, I it didn't say you can't use a metal roof. It simply said roofs shall be, and had a list, none of which were metal. However, I would like to use standing seam metal roof, probably in a forest green color, because I can mount solar panels on clips onto the standing seam without putting holes in the roof. And a couple of pictures, I don't know if you can see them from here. One of them is solar panels mounted on asphalt shingle roof. And if you can see it, there are stanchions going down into the roof and punching holes in the roof. That's counterintuitive to me, punching holes in a roof that's supposed to keep water out. This is a house that's about two blocks from where my lot is, so I'm thinking, you know, others are already doing it in the neighborhood. It might not be that objectionable.
So that's a standing, there's a metal roof on that house?
It's a standing seam metal roof, yes. And my I was here a couple of years ago, staying at my youngest, my oldest son's place, which is just a couple of blocks from my property. And the wildfire came within six miles and stopped at the river, so I was glad there was a break. However, since then, I've watched the fires where a firebrand comes, it just tree explodes. And so I thought, okay, I would prefer to have a non-combustible building. And so I the standing seam metal roof is the only piece that doesn't comply with the way the code was rewritten. I bought this and then the code was changed, but I hadn't applied for a permit, so I'm not grandfathered in, and I know that. It has a steel structure. The lateral bracing and the sheathing is also steel. However, my plan is to attach to that sheathing metal studs, rock wool, a wainscot of brick or stone and stucco, so that it still stays.
So the real question is, is the metal seam roof though, correct?
Yeah, the roof is the only piece that I can't hide, hide the metal.
So, okay, Wendy, I haven't, I've only been on the commission for a little over a year, but we have standing seam roofs around the cities, so we don't allow those anymore?
Well, I think what Kitty is saying is, in the code, there's a list of roofs that aren't allowed. It says X, Y, and Z, and it was not a metal roof. So the code is not coming out and prevent or prohibit any type of roof. The only list is what apparently is allowed.
So my question would be, if I walk around this community all the time, there are many metal, standing metal seam roofs within the city. So they've been put on without coming to, they probably put on a roof without having to come to the planning commission because they weren't building a new structure. Right, so I think.
I'm just going by what Dan told me was allowable.
And that's fine, Mary. I just, it's, it's nothing we can make a decision on tonight. It's good information to have, and I think from planning office, we need to go back to look at that code and look, see, I think if we've already allowed them, and I'll throw it around to the rest of the committee, planning commission, but if we've allowed them on we haven't told people to have to tear them off, they come in and put them on the roof, and we have them within the city already. I don't know why we'd prevent someone else from putting a standing seam metal seam roof on a roof. And if we need to specify that in code, then we need to, we need to go look at that in our, but Mary, I appreciate your time, but that, that's, we can't make a decision tonight, but I certainly, I've, I've heard what you've said, and I think the rest of the panel has too.
That's all I needed. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. One other person. And Don Jensen, you're here also. Again, if you can state your name and your address and keep it as brief as possible, because we have hearings to get through tonight, so.
Not a problem. Don Jensen, 5190 Kail Street, Salem, Oregon. My partner, I have a piece of property on 201 Whitney Street, and we've had it for, well, he's had it probably for 14 years, and we've, they got rezoned to the ID zone, which is an interchange development. And we've been trying, been trying, trying to find some kind of user for it for years and have been of no use. And then we've come up with somebody that's interested in maybe building a storage unit facility, which isn't allowed in that zoning, so we're looking to see if we can do a tax amendment or a zone change. We're kind of working with your planner about what would be the best way to do that, so we're trying to get it in front of you guys, let you know that's kind of what we're thinking. I sent you, gave you a copy of kind of a design that we're thinking about, some pictures of what a modern storage facility looks like today. It's much more adaptive than most people would think of and stuff, so we're, we're trying to get on the docket for next month, try to get all our stuff in line for that. We want to prepare you guys for where we're at, but it will take a little bit of work to get that through your, because your, your, where your zoning works. We worked with Dan Fleishman a little bit. I hear he's retired. So, and so here we are now, trying to get to the point where we can actually look at this and try to get something of use of this property. It's been sitting there for a long time, and the, the nice thing about it is your zonings for commercial general and commercial parks and also for your light industrial and your industrial commercial all allow for a storage unit facilities, so to, it's not a big leap of faith or leap of thought to have in that ID zone, which is a very special zoning, only for that little bit of property right next to the freeway.
Right.
And so it's really, really been difficult, and like I said, there's no need for another gas station. There's probably no need for another fast food restaurant. So, and so we're real limited. All right. Anyway, thank you. Appreciate your time.
That before us, and you're going to work with the planning office to get that on the agenda, actually.
Yeah, great. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. You got the green light on?
Oh, now it's on. Okay. Because it's out near an interchange on a limited access essentially freeway. I don't know if the city has an interchange area management plan, but they typically do with many areas around interchanges, and so that interchange area management plan would also need to be addressed in coordination with ODOT. And as I understand interchange area management plans, they're set up to serve the public on the main road, on the freeway. And so that would be part of what ODOT would be looking at, and so it wouldn't just be a matter of changing one use or allowing one additional use in the district. It might be changing the language in the interchange area management plan if there is one out there.
There's gotta be. I mean, having retired from ODOT and having been in the planning, development, highway structures and interchanges, there's gotta be an interchange area management plan, which will involve ODOT in those approvals also, so, yep, all right. Very good. Thank you. All right, with that said, we can get on with our hearings for the night. I'm going to tell you that I'm the vice chair. I'm not the chair that normally runs this. I didn't know I was picking this up until I walked in the door tonight. We might stumble just to hear, but we're going to get through this just fine. So first hearing for tonight, my name is Larry McKinley, and I am the vice chair for the State and Planning Commission. I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file number 5-06/23, a request to vacate the alley between North First Avenue and North Second Avenue, running from East Hollister to Street to East Pine. This hearing is now open. Vacations of streets and alleys is the subject of Oregonary Vice Statute, Chapter 271, Section 130. The statute establishes a criterion of determining that the vacation would not prejudice the public interest. All testimony, arguments, and evidence received during this public hearing must be directed toward the approval criterion or to such other rule, law, regulation, or policy which you believe to apply to this case. If you have documents, maps, or letters that you wish to have considered by this body, they must formally be placed in the record of this proceeding. To do that, either before or after you speak, please submit them electronically to the planet planning staff. Prior to the conclusion of this hearing, any participant may request an opportunity to present additional evidence, arguments, or testimony regarding the application involved here. Continuances may take the form of holding an additional public hearing or oral testimony aloud, or may consist of holding the evident jury record open for a period of time designated by the city for submittal from the public of written evidence. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was provided in this case. Okay, I hear none to this jurisdiction of this body to hear the, of the considered case. I hear none. Are there any declarations conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of the commission? I hear none. If you are providing testimony during this public hearing, please state your name and address for the record. As a participant in the hearing, the city is required to notify you of the final results of the process. We are now ready for the staff introduction.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, and considering this is my first meeting, I'm not sure if Dan would, was normally in the mode of a long staff report, but I think probably given the three-page introductory briefing, if you will, he probably in the past did not take a long time, so I will not take a long time, and that way there will be more time for questions. I think pretty much in your introduction there, you covered the case on the first page of the brief staff report. It outlines the subject alley between First and Second, between Hollister and Pine Street. And the alley is clear and open, just the one end down by the vet clinic has some paving. The rest of it is apparently essentially a gravel surface. The criteria, it's one of those things mentioned already that the State and Development Code does not have criteria to address the alley vacation applications. And so the third paragraph on page two refers to ORS 271-120, which provides that the ultimately the council, because they're the decision authority for this, they would need to find that there is no harm to the public interest, or as the ORS says, find the public interest is not prejudiced. There is a public storm drain line in the alley, and if the alley is vacated, then that storm drain line would turn over to be publicly maintained, and that way the city would not have to deal with it ever again, and that would be part of the decision. I think other things, the natural gas people had no comment. The internet people, they have some facilities, and apparently the plan is to have the lots consolidated, and so if the lots are consolidated, then the internet folks would not need easements over anybody else's property to get to another property. So that is something that's here in the comments. I guess with that, the recommendation is that staff recommends approval with the conditions that are reflected in the draft order that is attached to the staff report.
All right, thank you. So at this point, is there any presentation from the applicant? And we've seen you before.
Yes. My name is Jeff Brewbaker, and we're 1308 North First Avenue there, here in Stateon. I just, just to comment, our reasons for applying to have the alley vacated is simply to give us more flexibility. Our, our hope is at some point here to be able to expand the existing veterinary hospital, and just per the architect, not having to maintain setbacks from the alley would allow more flexibility as we go about planning that expansion, so that, that was our reason for making this application, and the fact that there wasn't, didn't seem to be a lot of didn't seem like there was going to be a lot of, I guess, opposition to, or there wasn't going to be, it wasn't going to create a lot of problems, I guess, for, it seemed like for other folks, so.
All right.
That's about all I have.
All right, thank you. So Jim, is there any other staff report besides what you already gave us?
No, there isn't.
Okay. Any questions from the commission? Hearing.
Just to confirm, you do own all of the properties surrounding that?
All right, thank you, Amy. All right, hearing, no more questions? Any proponents' testimony? Hearing none. Opponents' testimony? Hearing none. Government agencies? Hearing none. General testimony? Hearing none. Questions from the public? All right. Questions from the commission? I think we've all been through this before when we approved the actual change of land use there with the property. Any summary from the applicant other than what you already provided? All right. Any staff summary, Jim?
Nothing.
What you already gave us?
What I've already said.
Okay. Then at this point in time, having no input, I'm going to close the hearing. And are there any deliberation from the commission, any comments? I just, from my perspective, we've already approved the change of land use to the lot on Pine Street. That's a whole block that the veterinary clinic has now purchased. It makes sense. There's not need for an alley between those buildings at this time, and if the public is going to maintain the storm drainage and the other facilities on the property, in my opinion, it's, it's pretty easy to go with. So at this point, I would accept a motion from one of the commission members.
Mr. Chairman, I move the State and Planning Commission to recommend statements to the council that the alley be between North First Avenue and North Second Avenue, running from East Hollister Street to East Pine Street. Be being capable and adopt the direct order designated by staff.
Do I hear a second? Okay. All, all in favor? I? I opposed. It passes. Recommendation. Hearing is, that is done. All right, that was the easy one tonight.
Okay. I have one question.
Yes.
I'm, I'm Mike Reynolds. I'm the co-applicant.
Right.
I've been emailing Dan pretty regularly about this last month.
Has he been responding this last week?
You're right. This is the first I've heard him retire, so who's, who's my new contact versus?
Be me. I'm, I'm Jim Jacks, and I've got a card I can bring to you all. Though I think
You've taken over this job.
No.
Okay.
He's in.
So you may have a third person sometime soon.
Okay.
All right. Second hearing for the night. Here we go. Evening. My name is Larry McKinley. I am the vice chair for the State and Planning Commission. I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file 6-06/23, an application for site plan review to construct a warehouse and office at 1319 West Washington Street. The property is owned light industrial. This hearing is now open. Oregon land use law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. That statement will, with all the information required, to be presented under ORS 197-795-5, is printed and available at the back counter. If you have not received one of those, these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or, or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes to your turn to speak during the hearing. Also with the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing. The planning commission rules of procedures for land use public hearings and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You are encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent in this case. I hear none. To jurisdictions of this body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any member of this body?
Mr. Chairman?
Oh, yes.
I was contacted by a neighbor who wanted to know what was going on, and I told her I hadn't read the application. The neighbor wanted, started to tell me about the history of the property, and I told her I had to make my decision based on what's in the application, public testimony. I suggested if they had concerns to come to the meeting, so I have no bias in this issue.
Thank you, Richard. Hearing none others, then we are now ready for the staff introduction.
Thank you, Vice Chair, and again, there's just a brief three-page introduction. As noted, the issue is a site plan review, a cold storage warehouse of approximately 200 feet, or 2,000 2,000 square feet, and then a two-story, a small two-story office that would be a total of 1,200 square feet or 600 square foot footprint. There's a aerial photo at the bottom of the first page of the summary staff report. The property's on West Washington Street, and the materials in here shows the site plan and so forth. Basically, the office would be in the southwest corner. The storage facility would be behind that, in the, essentially, the northwest corner. The middle and east part of the property would be parking and circulation for trucks to be able to get onto the property and back into the warehouse area. Of the let's see. I'm trying to remember what the issue with this is. Oh, the issue is the sanitary sewer pipes in Washington Street are at or near capacity, apparently something like 99%. And so in the discussion, and then in the planning commission order, it's talking about the applicant will need to submit information related to how many fixtures in the plumbing world, like how many bathrooms, wash sinks, and how might, how many employees and so forth that would be there in the office and in the warehouse using the bathroom, essentially trying to get a better handle on how much effluent would be generated and moved out to the city sewer line in Washington Street. And that information then would be submitted to the city, the Public Works Department, city engineer would review that, see what it says, send on to the engineering firm that's working on increasing the capacity of the cities. And I guess there's more than just one sewage pipe that is at or near capacity, but they would review the information also and run their model to see how a certain amount of effluent generated by this project at that site would affect the sewer line in Washington Street. And at that point, it either would be insignificant, or it would be enough to be an issue. So other than that, it didn't appear that Dan, in our discussion about this, had any particular concerns, and so with that, I will leave it, and that is my brief staff report, and be ready to answer any questions.
All right, thank you. Is there an applicant here to any presentation? All right. And we're going to skip over the staff report since we just had it. Any questions from the commission?
No question. Is this going to hook into the sewer on Ida?
No. As I understand it, the, the lateral from this project would run to south to Washington Street into a sewer line in Washington Street, and that is, I'm not sure what size, but I think it's somewhere in the information. It's a larger rather than a smaller pipe, and that is at or near capacity. And that then is the reason to have this additional analysis done based on information provided by the applicant. I'm not sure, I assume the sewage in Washington is running either east or west, and whichever direction it's going. I don't know if that would eventually connect into Ida or not.
Is that putting that new sewer in on Ida?
So the new sewer, the new line on Ida has to go in because Ida Street is restricted from any further development until that is increased. This one in Washington, I don't think that impacts the Ida pipe at this point. But ultimately, our decision here tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, is not impacted by the permit or the review of the sewer capacity. We're only looking at land use proving, approving the bill structure on there, correct, Jim?
Well, part of approving is considering whether or not there's adequate
Right.
street sewer water and storm drain for this development, and so in the draft order.
Stipulation.
In the draft order at the end for their conditions of approval, one of those addresses this issue of whether or not there's enough sewage, and so the city engineer and the other engineering company that's working on the improvements to the several sewer pipes will review information and determine whether or not this project would be able to be built and not overtax the line in Washington Street. If it's going to overtax it, then apparently the city would not issue a building permit for it.
Right.
If it's not going to overtax it, then the city could issue a building permit.
All right. Other questions from the commission?
I do have some, some concerns about noise. I know this isn't, isn't a residential district, but there are some residences on the west side or a residence, which appears to be in an industrial light zone.
which appears to be in an industrial light zone. And there are some houses north of here. Uh, what about noise from loading and unloading the, uh, the trucks?
Well, I, I don't know about the noise, uh, we haven't had any comments or calls, questions from surrounding property owners. The, with the building proposed on the west property line, then the, that would mean trucks would not be pulling in along the west property line or the north property line. They'd be pulling in essentially to the middle of the property and then backing around. Maybe, as far as I understand, they would be backing in and then their ice would be unloaded, put in the cold storage facility. And then at some point, it would be taken out again to be distributed. But, uh, I don't know what the noise limits would be. Probably not any noisier than the traffic out on the street already, I would think.
Okay. Yeah, and if the neighbors haven't said anything, I guess it's a moot point, huh? Thank you.
All right, so I have one last question, and it's just my mind is pegged on this one, so if someone in the city is building a two-story office complex, are they required to put ADA access from the second, first floor to the second floor, or is that not a stipulation within the city?
Uh, I don't know, it's a building code question.
Okay.
But if they have to have an elevator, well, I, I think in this one, they're proposing that the second floor be storage.
Okay.
And the actual office operations would be on the first floor.
All right, very good.
So they may not need to have an elevator.
Very good. All right, thank you, if there are no more questions from the commission then, um, are there any proponents' testimony? Opponents' testimony? Government agencies? General testimony? Questions from the public? Questions from the commission? Hearing none? Applicant summary, there's no applicant here. Staff summary, or is there anything else to add to it, Jim?
Nothing to add.
All right, thank you. At this point, we'll close the hearing. Um, commission deliberation? Any thoughts? Input?
Well, do they have to, do we have to have something done or decided to both the bathrooms first?
So we can approve the chain, we can approve the request, but within the request language, there is stipulation, and if they have to apply for their affluent, and if it's not approved, then they won't get a building permit from the city to develop that until that sewer line is increased and can handle that. Yes, we can, yes, we can. All right, that point then? Does anyone have a motion on what we need to do on this?
Uh, Mr. Chair, I move the State and Planning Commission, approve the application of Lunskey Properties LLC land use file number six dash zero six twenty-three and adopt the draft order presented by staff.
Is there a second?
Oh, exactly.
All right, all in favor? May I? Okay, opposed? Motion carries. So the commission's decision may be appealed to the city council within fourteen days of the mailing of the notice of the decision in accordance with section seventeen, twelve, one, ten of the state municipal code. All right, thank you, so on to our third hearing. Guessing there's people here for the third hearing. All right, here we go. Good evening, my name is Larry McKinley, I'm the vice chairperson for the State and Planning Commission, and I will be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file number four zero five slash twenty-three. An application for preliminary plan approval of a proposed three parcel partitioning. The property is owned light industrial. This hearing is now open. Oregon law induced law requires a statement be made to those in attendance that covers certain matters relative to this case. That statement, with all the information required to be presented under ORS one ninety seven, seven ninety seven, five, is printed and available at the back counter. If you have not yet received one of these forms, you should go get one and review it prior to, to presenting your testimony. If anyone has any questions regarding anything on the statement or objects to it not being read out loud, please raise those questions when it comes to your turn to speak during the hearing. Also with the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called to speak during the public hearing. The Planning Commission's rules of procedure for land use public hearings and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You are encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice that was sent out in this case. I hear none. To the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider this case. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex parte contact, or bias by any members of this body? I hear none. We are now ready for the staff introduction.
Thank you again, Vice Chair, and this, uh, is a partition, a request to split one property into three properties. On the first page of the staff report is a map showing the property and the, uh, parcel one, the proposed parcel one is on the north side of Washington Street. And then the majority of the property is south of Washington Street, but north of what you might think would be another street at the south, but that's the Salem Ditch. And then the third parcel is on the south side of Salem Ditch. Uh, all total, there's about fifty acres in the subject property. And I might note that the third parcel on the south side of Salem Ditch, uh, it has frontage on Evergreen. And is that Evergreen? On the right side? We already had someone talking about North Evergreen, I think I'm getting it confused. Anyway, uh, it has frontage on the street on the right side there, the east side. And the lot itself is a very interesting shape. It keeps going to the west and going to the west. One of those little streets along the bottom is Gardner, a kind of a half-block-long street that sticks up north from Ida. And so, yeah, even though the parcel three name is over on the east side, the actual parcel continues on over, uh, running fully half the distance of the total property. So on the north end, uh, there's a couple of storm drain pipes. One of them is a city storm drain pipe that originates, uh, basically at the intersection of uh, Darby and, uh, I forget the intersecting street, but it runs south into this property and through the property to Washington Street. And then, uh, just before it gets to Washington Street, it sets off at a kind of a southwest angle as it runs under Washington Street. And it runs through the property under the west portion of the Norpac buildings and eventually to the Salem Ditch. Based on comments from the city engineer through the Public Works Department, there's a proposed condition of approval that that pipe, that is a city pipe on the western part of the proposed parcel one be put into an easement as part of the final plat. And then when that pipe reaches Western Street, instead of continuing on into parcel two, that it be extended about three hundred feet to the west in Washington Street to an existing manhole. And from that existing manhole, there's a fifteen-inch storm drain pipe that runs westerly in, uh, Washington Street. There's, uh, apparently another storm drain pipe on the eastern part of parcel one, and it runs under Washington Street and into parcel two. And then that, once you have two properties, uh, parcel two would need to grant to parcel one the right for stormwater from parcel one to be running through parcel two to get south to the Salem Ditch. So that's the complication for this project. And, uh, we have some comments from the Saniam Water Control District that are in the packet. They're essentially, uh, concerned about the storm drain pipes that are coming to the Salem Ditch and what would happen or what happens with them as future development would occur. And overall, they're concerned with future development, particularly on parcel one and three. And the preliminary discussions are that the applicant for this partition isn't the owner, but he's working in coordination with the owner of the property. And parcel one in the future may have an application for site plan review to put storage units on the parcel one, the north side of Washington Street. And also to put storage units on parcel three on the south side of Salem Ditch. And with that kind of development on parcels one and two, that would be additional stormwater runoff. And the Saniam Water Control District is interested in making sure there's a good handle on how much stormwater runoff that would be, where it would go, how it would be dealt with. So I think with that, I'll end my comments and we can go on with the testimony.
Yep, thank you. All right, applicant presentations?
Is it Jennifer?
Yeah.
Uh, yes, she's with Emilio.
Are you ready and can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Uh, so I'm Jennifer Arnold, I'm with Emilio Design at, uh, fifteen hundred Valley River, Suite one hundred in Eugene. Um, we are proposing a three-lot partition, uh, mostly so that we can start looking at possibly divvying up ownership and, uh, potentially looking at some uses on parcels one and three specifically. Uh, we were required to submit a redevelopment plan for parcel one and three. Um, so we chose an outright permitted use of storage units. Uh, potential future use may be a storage unit, it may be something different. Um, at this time, we're only proposing land division, any future development plan would come back to you for further review. Um, we are aware of some utility issues. As we've turned in preliminary plats, uh, we've been informed of a handful of easements that appear on the city GIS but don't appear on any title report or reference to the property. So we're working on reconciling where those easements are, what they actually say, and where they would need to be located on the actual survey. Um, so we know that there's a little bit of survey work needed, uh, to clean this up before we get into final plat approval. Um, we, we know that there are some utilities that are not in public easements. Uh, we are totally fine with putting those easements together and identifying those public utilities. Um, any encroachments into the public right-of-way are proposed to be removed, uh, with approval of this application. And, um, as earlier, uh, said, there's some stormwater, uh, issues that we would want to call out with any future development plan, so a lot of the public agency comments that we received uh, mostly spoke to future development, um, and then the survey requirements. Uh, so I hope you keep that in mind, uh, otherwise I'm here for questions, uh, and, uh, we're asking for approval on this three-lot partition.
All right, so on a three-lot partition, this is where I'm getting conflicted here a little bit. So we know there's a big deal with stormwater runoff. We know if we're gonna put storage facilities, we're gonna increase impervious surface out there, and that's not really, I don't know if that's part of this, but it would be a condition of the approval, Jim, if we were gonna do something like that to have those things met, I a three-lot partition is just a three-lot partition, but there's a lot of stuff attached to it that'll have to be addressed as they move forward into the future, if they're gonna successfully develop this. And that's really, it's not directed at you, it's directed at the developers here. But I don't know how that's, how that's orchestrated, I guess is what I'm trying to get my hands around. A three-lot partition is just that, but there's no permits to build anything or do anything with it at this point.
Right, at this point, as you say, it's just splitting the one property into three. And then in the future, if there is to be any development, they would need to come through a site plan review. And at that point, there certainly would be a kind of review of stormwater runoff from that proposed development. The issue that the city engineer, Public Works Department has raised is with the existing city storm drain line that runs through parcel one from north to south, kind of on the west part of parcel one. And the city is interested in having the final plat definitely show that in an easement. And then, when the line gets to Washington Street, rather than having it continue to flow the city's water that's collected just north of the subject property into parcel two on the west, uh, south side of Washington Street, the city is suggesting, recommending a condition of approval that the applicant extend a sewer, a water, uh, excuse me, a stormwater line about three hundred feet to the west to an existing manhole that is part of a, of a, part of an existing stormwater system that has a fifteen-inch line exiting, exiting it going to the west. So, uh, that would then put the city's storm drain line on parcel one in an easement and then would take care of where is that water going? It would be going westerly in a new line to the existing manhole.
Okay. Are there any other questions for the applicant from the commission? Hearing none, staff report, Jim, do you have anything else to add?
Uh, no, I don't.
Okay. All right, questions from the commission, that's probably where I should ask that last question, but.
I just have a quick question, um. Should this may not have any bearing on what we're talking about right now, but it does say that, um, there is a temporary easement that is used as the city's community garden. Is there any way of knowing if the um, residents using that community garden have been notified or have any notification of the partition, possible partition?
Uh, I don't know, the notice that was sent out for this partition was the standard notice for partitions. But, uh, I'm not aware.
It's the, it's the two hundred, is it two hundred, the radius around the partition, they send it out to everyone within that circle of influence.
Yeah, and then any resident use the garden, so.
Right.
All right, so it's possible that some people that are using it may not know. Okay.
Any other questions from the commission?
Uh, I have, I'm sorry, I have one other question, um, just looking at the, um, the, some of the reports that you supplied, um, the partition, uh, or the surveyor certificate, uh, is it, I, I see that it's not signed, is it not signed because it's not complete yet? Based on what you were saying?
The, you mean the, the final plat?
Um, uh, yeah, it's the, it says partition plat number and there's not a number on it, and it's just the sur, surveyor certificate, um.
Yeah, the material that they submitted, uh, is for the application phase and the decision tonight, based on the decision, then they may need to make some changes to that. And as part of the standard countywide system where the Marion County Surveying Office, the Marion County Surveyor, they require all plats to be submitted to them. Then they distribute a copy to several folks, including the city. The city would review that draft final plat to make sure that it shows everything and is consistent with the planning commission's approval. And then those comments go back to Marion County and other comments go to Marion County from. And then those comments go back to Marion County and other comments go to Marion County from other agencies or other people at Marion County. And then the Marion County Surveyor's Office tells the surveyor for this project, okay, you can prepare the final plat. And at that point, then the surveyor prepares the final plat, turns that into Marion County and they have a, the two copies come to the city for the city to sign. And at that point, yet again, the city takes a look to make sure that everything that is shown on the plat is consistent with the decision that you're making tonight before the city signs on the dotted la- dotted line. And then once that happens, the two copies of the final plat go back to Marion County and are distributed to have the, I'm not sure how many, three or four more people, the county, uh, treasurer and, uh, I think the surveyor has to sign it saying that it complies with Oregon survey law. And I'm not sure if in Marion County, one of the Board of County Commissioners signs the plat. But there's another two or three or maybe four signatures from Marion County officials.
Okay. Thank you.
Any more questions? All right. Thank you. All right. It's time for proponents' testimony. People in favor of? Opponents' testimony. Anyone against? Very good. Government agencies? General testimony? Questions from the public? There we go. Please state your full name and your address.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Blythe and I'm here with my husband, Brandon Blythe. We're at eight one five West Ida. So we are literally on the corner of Ida and Fern.
Jennifer, how, how do you spell your last name?
B L Y T H E. B is in boy. Uh, so with this development, uh, there's land behind High Street. So there's a U. It kind of goes Gardner, High, Fern. So behind gar- uh, behind High is part of this property.
Okay.
And there's been rumors in the neighborhood that Fern is going to be developed. It's a gravel road at the moment. So we don't know if that property, if the project's going to go through over to Fern. And if so, how is that going to be developed? And if it's, or if you even know that, I'm not sure if you even know that.
Okay. I walk that area down there all the time, but I don't, I don't recognize the street names.
Mm-hmm. Does she want that?
In the, uh, so what you're, so did, uh, the people from our consultants hear that question?
Did Jennifer hear that?
I did hear that. I just wasn't sure when I was going to get an opportunity to answer. Um, so we don't know the, uh, future development for any of these sites. At this point, we're just dividing the property. And once we get, uh, an idea of a potential use for either of these sites, uh, more than likely we'll have a whole other public process, um, potentially including a neighborhood meeting where we can kind of go over some neighbor specific concerns and then general city concerns. But at this time, we don't know how far the site's going to be developed or when it will be developed.
Thank you. Other question? All right. Thank you very much for your time. All right. Any questions from the commission?
Uh, Mr. Chair, just, uh, Vice Chair, just as a comment, uh, when development is proposed on any of the property down there for parcel three, abutting property owners will be notified and have the opportunity to comment and partake in the process.
All right. Thank you. Thank you. All right. Any summary from the applicant?
Uh, just in case you guys had any other questions, I'm here. Um, click reminder, we're not proposing any changes to any public infrastructure. We're just trying to divide the property into three parts using some common features like the Salem Ditch and Washington Street. Um, and then I, I'm hoping that there's an approval.
Right. That's, uh, we're way early in the process right now. The, the difficult discussions would yet to come. So. All right. So is there any staff summary for us? Or have you got it all, Jim?
Well, I think I've said it all, so I'll leave it as said.
All right. Then I will close the hearing. Any deliberation from the commission? I look at this as very preliminary, but we're just approving the partitioning of the greater Norpac Canary property. Um, a lot of our, I think, are difficult discussions will come down the road as development proposals are made, infrastructure that needs to support it. Everything from, you know, water runoff to all the other stuff, you know? There'll be some really tough questions as you, when you think about what's proposed earlier is the majority, all the drainage off that Canary lot has been flowing in the Salem Ditch. And is that even going to be allowed in the future with, you know, environmental laws and everything else to go along. But that's kind of outside of our area. So right now, that's all I've got unless anyone else. So is there a recommendation from any commission member?
I move a motion to approve the application with conditions adopting the draft as presented.
That's it. Hold your second. All in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. That closes the hearing. The commission's decision may be appealed to the state and city council within fourteen days of the mailing of the notice of decision in accordance with section seventeen twelve one ten of state municipal code. Is there any other business for the commission tonight?
Yes, the approving of the minutes. We-
The minutes from last meeting three months ago.
Yeah.
Do I hear a motion to approve the minutes from the last meeting? A, a motion to approve the minutes from our meeting three minutes ago?
I, uh, I have a motion to approve the work.
Okay.
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. And that passes. Anything else, Wendy? Then with that said, we're going to close the hearing. Thank you.